Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, August 23rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Miller, will you take the roll, please?
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Show Councilmember DeMichael absent and excuse, please.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
You do have a quorum with six members present.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, August 23rd, 2021, as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 6-0. Moving on to recognition, we have a promotion tonight, Gage Cruz to Sergeant in our Police Department. I'm going to call up Chief Tim Gibbons. Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That's correct. Tonight Officer Gage Cruz becomes Sergeant Gage Cruz. Soon-to-be Sergeant Cruz joined us in 2016 at the Police Department. Prior to that, he was no stranger to service. He served his country as a member of the United States Marine Corps for four years. His time there, he achieved the rank of Corporal, was an infantry squad leader, and received a combat action ribbon for his service in Afghanistan. So we were glad to have him join the Garden City Police Department. Since then, he's received numerous awards and accommodations, a Professional Excellence Award, Department Citation, many unit commendations, and he's also a MAD Award winner, and also served as our First Traffic Resource Officer and our Field Training Officer. So the kind of person I'm describing to you, that's the kind of person we want in leadership roles at Garden City PD, and we're glad to have him and glad to see him achieve the rank of Sergeant. So I'm proud to have him come in front of you today and in front of the clerk to be sworn in as our newest sergeant. So Gage, if you can come on over? And then once he is sworn in, his girlfriend Sarah will be stabbing, pinning the badge on him.
Great. So you raise your hand to repeat after me. I, the undersigned Gage Cruz.
I, Gage Cruz.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the rank of Sergeant.
To the rank of Sergeant.
Of the Garden City.
Of the Garden City.
Police Department.
Police Department.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and defend.
That I will uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Michigan.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Garden City.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Garden City.
And will uphold and abide.
And will uphold and abide.
By the rules and regulations.
By the rules and regulations.
As well as all other orders.
As well as all other orders.
Be they general, specific, or otherwise.
Be they general, specific, or otherwise.
Of the Garden City Police Department.
Of the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I will not at any time.
That I will not at any time.
Lend aid, advise, or sucker.
Lend aid, advise, or sucker.
To any organization known or suspected.
To any organization known or suspected.
Of having subversive tendencies.
Of having subversive tendencies.
Nor will I in any way.
Nor will I in any way.
Affiliate myself with.
Affiliate myself with.
Such organizations.
Such organizations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Sergeant Cruz, on behalf of Mayor and Council, congratulations. Thank you not only for your service to our city, but service to our country. Thank you very much. God bless you. Give them a minute to file out. Okay, moving on to item six, comments from state and county officials. I don't see any here. Go figure, right? No presentations. Community events, I'm going to call up our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Jason.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just here to just let you guys know about a couple of our fall events that are up and coming. One of the first events we have will be Nerf Wars at the Maplewood Center. That'll be on Saturday, August 28th, starting at 11:00 AM, and that is for ages seven to nine, and the fee for that per person will be $15. Our next event, I'm excited to announce, cardio drumming is coming back. We just had a free event last Wednesday, and we had about 20 participants come out for that. So we're going to take it back to the Maplewood Center and do it right there in the gym. That will begin on Wednesday, September 1st, and that will be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, and it'll be weekly from then on. There will be a $5 drop-in fee and an opportunity to rent equipment if you don't have it, or you can also buy it from us. So we have a little package deal that we can do for you. Next is our thrift shop sidewalk sale. That'll be on Saturday, September 11th, from 10:00 AM till 2:00 PM. We've had great success with that so far. The last two times, I think we've made well over $200 each time, so it's a great event for us to hold. And then number four is our senior Toledo Zoo Trip and the Aquarium, and that will be on Wednesday, September 15th, and that is $25 per person, and they'll meet at the ice arena, and you'll go out there by bus. Next one is we have our Senior Health Expo. This will be on Friday, October 1st, at the Maplewood Center. That will be from 10:00 until 1:00 PM. That's going to be like, things like a free health screening, refreshment, stuff like that, and it's geared towards seniors. Then just a friendly reminder, if those of you guys have not seen it, this went out to all of our Garden City households. So hopefully, we've already actually seen registrations much earlier than what we've seen before, so it's already turning out to be a great opportunity for us, and we plan to keep doing it. So hopefully you guys have enjoyed this so far. And then the last thing is, we are going to be opening up the ice arena for regular programming on September 9th. We do have some things scheduled before that, but our programming for the Parks and Rec Department will start on the 9th. We've already started to chill down the concrete slab, and we'll be painting the ice on Wednesday, so we got some time to do some training and build up the ice and stuff like that, so.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody anything for Mr. Jason? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Love the playbook.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, we have no petitions or communications tonight. Next is our public hearing, which is on the sidewalk repair program. This is sidewalks that are heaved one inch or more. We pick a different section of town every year, and this public hearing is for the necessity to have this repair program to repair heaved sidewalks. I'm going to call up our DPS Director, Mr. Omen, to speak first, and then I'll call for the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This would be the 10th consecutive year that we have implemented a sidewalk program for repair and replace. The target area for this year's program was Ford Road to Marquette and Harrison to Inkster, and we also included Middle Belt Road from Ford to Maplewood. During the inspection process, walks greater than one inch trips hazards were flagged. Fifty-eight properties in these areas were flagged. GV Cement from Brownstown, Michigan will be the contractor if we move forward. They did the sidewalk program for us the past number of years.
Okay. I have a question that some residents always ask me. While that concrete company's in town doing these repairs, Joe resident that wants to fix his sidewalk anywhere in town wants to take advantage of the special price that they give the city, can he call DPS and say, "I would like that company to come and give me an estimate to repair two or three flags"?
Yes, he can.
So any resident out there, if you want to repair your sidewalks and get the price of the city contractor, call DPS. But we are going to concentrate on Marquette, Ford, and Harrison to Inkster for this year's repair program. But anybody can call if they want repairs on there. I just want that known, okay? Thank you, sir.
Yep.
At this time, I'm going to call up the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak on the necessity to have this repair program? Anybody wishing to speak on this topic and this topic only? I'll ask one more time. Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, I will close out the public hearing. We'll move on to item 11, the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 11A1 and 2.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? Mr. Murray.
At the last council meeting, I asked why the Parks and Rec monthly meeting is not on this consent agenda, and I see it's not on here again. Is there any particular reason that we don't have official documentation that you people are recipients of that item? And the key component is, we have this Hill Auditorium thing going on, and there was a survey done, and they never even asked. And as of right now, we're in a preliminary state of it, but yet nobody has done any survey about whether or not the residents want that item in the park. We'd like to know what you're going to do about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. Moving on to our action items, the first one is the 2021 Sidewalk Program, which was the... motions in order? Mayor? Councilmember Jacobs.
I move to determine the necessity for a sidewalk replacement program and directing the preparation of a special assessment roll for the 2021 Sidewalk Program.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Earl. Any comments from the table? From the general public? Mr. Murray.
Based on our Charter, Section 5.03, Ordinance Enactment, its enactment, it's page 19, line 8, "After a hearing of a council may, at the next regular scheduled meeting, adopt the ordinance with or without amendment." So we have the public hearing. My interpretation, what your Charter says, is you can vote on it at the next meeting, not this meeting. Is there a particular reason why we're not following the Charter?
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 6-0. Item 2, 2021 Neighborhood Stabilization Program, to call for a public hearing.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to introduce the ordinance and call for a public hearing for Monday, September 27th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, for the sale of the three NSP properties, 28510 Elmwood, 6907 Helen, 31742 Leona, to HP Snap.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Jacobs. Comments from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Kerwin?
5907.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes, 6-0. This is a good program. We fix these houses up, it increases the property value in the neighborhood and gets rid of a lot of blighted houses. We've done, I don't know, 17, 18 in the past few years. We showed the before and after picture, so it's an excellent program, and I'm glad we're doing a few more houses to improve the looks of our city.
Got some great Garden City residents.
Yep, and we get new residents. That's correct. Okay, item 3, MERS Officer Delegate. Mr. Miller, you want to speak on this first?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, this is to approve a delegate to vote on behalf of the city at the MERS Annual Meeting that will be held on October 21st. Martha Griggs is who we're recommending to do so. She's Personnel Director, and will have our interests at her fingertips. Thank you.
motions in order?
Mayor?
Councilmember Squires.
I move to approve the appointment of Martha Griggs, Personnel Director, as the Officer Delegate for the annual MERS Business Meeting in October of 2021.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Earl. Any further comments from the table? From the general public?
This is the content from your CPA Annual Report. It's legacy cost reporting. It's December 31st, 2016, the Governor signed Public Act 530 of 2016. In there, it's a comment, "In addition, for any system, either pension or retiree health, that is not funded at the level of 60%, the community must post every report to its website indicating..."
That's not germane to the topic. This is appointment of Martha to the...
Yes, and I'm setting the table for my question, sir. Are you going to allow me to speak, or are you going to continue your dictatorial chairperson mentality?
Stay on topic.
I am on topic.
Okay.
And my question is, is this delegate representing management or labor at this activity, and has your city manager made a report because you are under 60% funded on your pension fund?
Thank you. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. Item 4, Printing of the 2022 Golden Book. Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor. This, in 2019, we put together the first Golden Book, mailed out to everybody's homes, and was a big hit, to the point we still receive calls. People kept them, and they should, because it really gives everybody a chance to get an overview of the ordinances throughout the city, as well as all the contact information. From that first one, which was really was a nice draft to get started, department heads were able to go through the latest book, and has been governed over by a number of different people to see where we're at, and added more information, some new information, and so on. So we'd like to go to the printing of the book again at this point, which hopefully will be good for more than the two- to three-year period than the first one was. So this will be the '22 book. It would be out probably by before the end of the year, and like I said, it's a very useful source. As I've said many times, you can't play the game unless everybody knows what the rules are. So as long as everyone knows what the rules are in advance, then it becomes code enforcement issues and some other things, at least they've had it in their hands of what's allowed, what's not allowed, and people can refer to that book with questions about their neighbors or anything else, too. So it's a very useful marketing piece for the city, but it really sums the biggest issues up in our city into a small handbook, so.
And we mail that to every house and every business in the city, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, motions in order?
Mayor?
Councilmember Kerwin?
I motion to approve a contract with the Markers Group to print 16,048-page booklets of the Garden City Golden Book in the amount of $7,203.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. I heard two at the same time, but I'll go with Lynch. Any comments from the table? It's a good book. From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 6-0. At this time, we're going to move on to public comments that were not on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name. This is your opportunity to make a comment or a statement. It is not time to go back and forth with council members, and there is a three-minute time limit, and you can only come up one time. Yes, sir?
I'm in 6951 Deering. Been living there 38 years. On July 5th, they said they're going to repair my street, James. On July 6th, they said they're going to stop because they're going to put a drain system in. Well, they haven't did nothing but sloppy. I got pictures to show if you don't believe me. I talked to the mayor, remember a little conversation, he said, "In about 30 days, it should be done." Nothing's been completed, nothing. Oh, today they brought a quarter John up there. Okay? So from July 5th to today, they worked eight days, not even eight hours a day, three or five hours. I can show you pictures here, terrible workmanship, and what they're doing to my neighbors. Some of my neighbors couldn't be here today, they're out of town, whatnot. They blocked their driveway for the whole weekend. They had to call the police. They tore up his approach, put gravel, and he came home right through the ditch. We had to jack him up, pull the car out. Another neighbor got gravel, not gravel, cement chunks on city's property for three weeks. They went all the way down to the sidewalk. We manly picked them up. Seventy-five years old trying to pick this 200-pound piece of cement up. Nobody's doing nothing out there. It's a joke! And who from Garden City is overseeing this project? They should be doing something about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Murray.
Again, an item out of our Charter, it's Section 2.11, and it's audits, Part B. Managerial audit between a third and fourth year after the effect of the date of this charter. The council shall provide for a managerial audit of the functions of the city government other than finances. Not less than once in each five years, the council shall provide for a managerial audit of functions of the city government other than finances. Such audits shall be conducted by an independent consultant chosen by the council. My question is, Mr. Doherty, when you took over as city manager, did you have such a document in your possession? And when do we expect to have another one? Because that should be the tool you use on managing the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Hunt.
Kevin Hunt, Bridge Street, Garden City. Want to thank Mayor, Councilman Jacobs, Doc, Doc, our city manager, Chief Gibbons. Everybody's been trying. We have the school under construction. Specifically, what I'm speaking of is over at Cambridge Center. They have come in, ripped up the parking lot, running gravel trains in and out constantly. They're not... They've been told over and over by the Police Department to stay on Cambridge. Everything everybody's done, every time I've called, there's been response. The police come out there, they warn them, nothing happens. They're thumbing their noses at everybody. I called to the school district, spoke with the superintendent, did no good. You keep talking and talking and talking. And as I said to you, Doc, before, until we get our motor carrier out there and start stacking them up, where they're losing all kinds of time and starting inspecting those DOT trucks and ticketing them, this guy that's running these gravel trains, he could care less. Today, they started doing the asphalt, same thing. We've got all kinds of gravel on Bridge, on Cambridge, they're not cleaning it up. We pay our taxes. Doc has got company out there that comes through and does the street sweeping. They should be paying for it, not us. Saturday during the power outage, one of these clowns that's driving one of these double-bottom gravel trains sticks a boom up in the air and takes out three telephone poles, more power lines, cable, phone, everything else. One goes to the hospital. We had our police and our fire over there for probably four or five hours. The school district needs to be held responsible for that. They could... They don't seem to care. On our tax bills, that's the lion's share of our tax bill, is what goes to the school district. When they want something passed to get some more village money, Garden City's always passed it and taken care of them. They could care less about our city. They're doing nothing about it. It's nice that the school's getting some things done, the football field's looking beautiful, they're getting a roof on the high school, fine. But what they're doing over there is doing nothing but tearing up our roads that we've got to pay the bond money for.
You've got 15 seconds, Mr. Hunt.
To replace. That's all I had, except Mr. Miller, section on our agenda all the time, we've got number six. You should quit wasting ink. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? City managers' report.
I have nothing this evening, Mayor.
Nothing tonight? Councilman Earl?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Congratulations to Sergeant Cruz. The road at Deering, is it Deering or James? Can we find out? It's James? Okay. Can we get an update on that? I have driven by the construction going on, and it's the cement mixers, too, over there on Cambridge. If there are, as someone who has done motor carrier enforcement, if they're spilling their load, that's a $500 ticket. So maybe we can have somebody walk... watch them. If they're spilling their load on our roadway, we shouldn't have to pay to clean it up. And then finally, Garden City has been trying to hire firefighter paramedics, so if anybody out there knows somebody that wants to be a firefighter paramedic, they've gone through the training, we're looking to hire. You know, we're trying to fill positions. It's a good place to work for, so please, if you know anybody, have them put in. Thank you.
Councilmember Squires.
Just a couple of things. Congrats to Sergeant Cruz, and also I want to send my condolences to the family of Joe Hay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobs.
Yeah, a couple of things. Again, congratulations to Sergeant Cruz. Again, congratulations to Sergeant Cruz. Fine addition. And again, like the mayor said, thank you for your service here and in the service. Playbook, Mr. Chason, that's an excellent tool. And I know the... Your staff and the Parks and Rec Commission worked hard on it. I know I brought it up before about the garbage. And I'm not sure how they're doing it, Mr. Dockerty, but they managed to miss one street. This week, it was Marquette from, I think it's Hubbard to Craig Street. So that's been there for a week. I think a week ago or two weeks ago, the lawn garbage... Or yard waste sat on Warren Road, one little section from Middle Belt to Burnley, for four weeks. So somehow, we've got to start... You've got to get with Sam and get this under control. It's... To me, it's unacceptable to have that sitting out there for that long. I want to thank the DPW, Mr. Earlman, your guys. One, they stepped up yesterday. We had to... They had to be called in for the bathroom issue while the main pavilion was packed with people. They responded quickly and got the situation resolved. And so thank you for that. People were really happy. Also, to your guys for cleaning up after DTE that left some brushes, tree branches and limbs on the middle of Marquette for... Since the storm two weeks ago. Your guys went and cleaned it up, which we shouldn't have had to. But apparently, DTE is in no hurry to clean up their garbage. So thank you, guys, for that. Again, on the Cambridge issue, street. If we can get ahold of somebody, the street's full of dirt. I've had some people on Marquette, or not Marquette, Cambridge, complain about the dust being kicked up. I know when we do projects, we have to put barriers up to keep the dust down, sweep. We make the contractors sweep up. So I'd like to see us hold them accountable, just like our guys. Also, the one on Deering, we know that needs to be addressed. My condolences to, again, to Joe Hay's family. He passed away suddenly yesterday. It was... He was too young, and he was a longtime Garden City resident. And he was a really good guy with some younger kids, so... Also condolences to Andy Taylor's family, who lost his mother within a few days. And last but not least, the Kurt Blankenship's family. Kurt passed away. I know we presented him with a plaque in 2016. And at that time, he had been with the GCYAA for 50 years. So he just also recently passed away. He was a... Him and Shirley. They were well into their tenure when I joined GCYAA in 1988. So they've been around a long time. And having said that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerwin?
Just a couple of things. So I went to the Indie Art and Craft Jam in Garden City this past weekend. It was a great event, and I hope to see something like that again. It was very different. It brought out a very different crowd of people, people I have not seen before. It was put on by Creative Soul in Garden City and Helium Studios, which I believe is in Wayne. It was really neat. Hopefully, we can see that again. I also went to the Lucky Squirrel, and that had a good crowd again. People seemed to really enjoy that. I have a question. Maybe, Kim, you can get with me, or Doc, or we could all get together. I'm curious about the businesses. When they come in, and they come in the DDA area, how do you... How do you find out about it? So does Kim get a notice of what businesses come in? Or if you see businesses coming in, do you contact the city to see information about them? I'm curious of how that works. So I know I tried calling you this past week, or... So maybe you can tell me about that. I also want to give my heartfelt condolences to the Blankenship family. I've known Kurt my whole life. He's been a longtime family friend. His wife Shirley was a big jokester, embarrassing me all the time at school, like bringing me kitty lunchboxes in middle school and things like that. They're great people, and they're going to be sorely missed. And like Jacob said, Kurt has been involved with GCYAA for 60 years. And I just wanted to read a little bit of the plaque that you were saying that the city gave him, because I don't know if enough people know. But this is just a little snippet. "In 1956, along with the vision of the GCYAA founder, Forrest Saylor, Kurt began building the GCYAA one brick at a time, literally. Mr. Blankenship helped build the foundation and the brick walls for the concession stand that is currently in full operation today. He held many roles. He began coaching in 1958. He won many state championships. I know he coached his daughter for a long time as well. I know he volunteered for 60 years at least. He was a great man, and he's going to be missed." And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynch?
I'd like to start by sending my condolences to the Blankenship family. I know how involved both Mom and Dad were, and Kurt is definitely going to be missed. Also, congratulations on your promotion to Sergeant Cruz. And then I had two things. First of all, I want to remind everybody about the vaccinations. They are still going on over at the Maplewood Center. If you're there between 9:00 and noon, you go inside of Maplewood, and they're offering Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson. If you go from noon until 7:00 PM, they're in a mobile unit, and it's called a quick clinic van. And it's located on the east side of the parking lot. I just went today and got my booster shot. So those that are immunocompromised moderately to seriously, you can go and get your booster shot. And it is the Pfizer booster shot. So please take advantage, whether you're getting the booster, the first shots, or if you're taking your student that's qualified to be able to go up and get his or her vaccine for school starting. And then the last thing. We had a resident come up at our last meeting and questioned the treatment of two businesses within the city and wanted to know why one business had to take so many more steps to get their approval, and the other business was approved very quickly. And it... The way she said it, it indicated that maybe one was getting preferential treatment or one was not getting preferential, but unfair treatment. And I asked about it right after the meeting. One of the two businesses, which is at the Moose, what they're doing at the Moose was already approved. They're in the correct zoning for the business that they have. So they didn't have to take the extra steps. They just picked up and got the approval. The other business, which was the RC Cars, was not in the correct zoning. So they first had to go through the zoning approval. And then after they got that, they could pick up where the other one did to get the rest of the approvals. So that is the answer. There was no unfair treatment nor preferential treatment. It just depends, when you get a business started in Garden City, what the zoning is, where you pick your building at. And if it's the correct zoning, it makes it a lot simpler. If it's not the correct zoning for the type of business you want, you have to take a few more steps. And that's all that I have tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, I have one item. We still have the collection of school supplies in the hallway in front of the clerk's office. So there's another two weeks to drop off your donations to be given to Garden City schools. We've got... We've actually filled up a couple of boxes. So I'd like to fill up another box with all of the school supplies. And then they are given out to children in need within the schools. So the box is out in the main hallway. Drop it off anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? Is there anything in particular you think is needed more than something else?
Well, they gave us a list, but, you know, any kinds of pens, pencils, paper...
Crayons, markers.
Crayons, markers. Those kinds of things are probably the most needed. So if you want to do that, please consider donating those.
Thank you.
Give up some of your crayons. I, too, want to give my condolences to the Blankenship family. What a heck of a volunteer. Fifty, sixty years, that's just incredible. Great, great couple, both of them. I called Mr. Bichelli, who does the inspections of the roadwork today, because I, too, want to know what was going on with James. I drove around this morning. He says the asphalt companies over at Pierce and Farmington, as soon as they finish up over there, they're coming to James. So your road is... Your road is going to get done this year. And I'm not... Sir, it's my time. I'm not making excuses, but there has been an unusual amount of rain this year, and that does push road construction back. But they are coming. They're at Farmington and Pierce. And when they get finished up over there, they'll be over to James. That's all I have. No further business. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.